At our district attorney and I may have missing one person.
He's in the restroom.
He may not have wanted that on the record.
He likes facts.
I think she does that on purpose.
I have to touch the ground.
You can't hear?
I can't hear her, I can't see her again, you're.
Well, I can swear she's here.
District Attorney, you're up.
Yes ma'am, I have a few items that were outlined in the project task list and working on some other items. I had conversations with Amy Tebow, you know, she was the attorney for Magnolia Lakes, you know, making that presentation. Also, I received an email from Justin Crucial with regards to the torals, I've not replied to that. I think the board policy is if I get inquiries from residents that are not generally part of committees, that absent further direction from the board, well, he just wanted to know what the status was, basically. I can read the email to you, but I've not replied to Mr. Crucial, I'm not planning on doing that absent board direction. I think the pond standard committee or the maintenance committee is working on the matter and that's where it lies at the present time, to my understanding.
Will you not direct him to staff, I have staff reply?
I guess it was, was it sent to you as well as?
He asked me the same question, I think it was two days ago.
And plus another complicating factor is Mr. Crucial is represented by counsel who is threatening litigation against the district. And so I, under the Florida bar rules, I can't communicate with him absent approval from his counsel. It just says, "Good afternoon, just a quick email, I'm wondering what exactly is going on with the maintenance of our ponds." I mean, that's.
I think we answered that earlier and we can answer very easy to him. We just said with, from Tyler, that we have told the county that we're going to be following the current pond standards for maintenance.
Well, I think this.
I mean, if that's what we're telling them, we might as well not lie about it.
I think this question is broader than that. I mean, exactly, what exactly is going on with the maintenance of our ponds? Does that mean water quality issues, does that mean erosion issues, does that mean, I have no idea, so.
But my point is the pond standards address all those.
I understand, but it's, that's a work in progress with the committee, he's going to come back with recommendations. And so.
Well, we currently have existing ponds.
What I suggest is, my response to him is that I suggest you attend committee meetings and provide input and suggestions to the committee as to what you wish to have for pond maintenance. I mean, I think that's the most appropriate response, quite frankly. And with the board, if the board so indicates, I'll do that.
I guess your first question is good in what's happening in relation to what, what is he asking?
Yeah, what am I actually?
Very specifically is he asking?
The first thing I have to do is ask his attorney if I can communicate with him directly.
But why would you, why, he should be, he should be talking to our district manager.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point of content, that's what, I mean, I would defer.
Yeah, part of the difficulty was though, because of the threatened litigation and he sent the demand letter and I think rightly so, Chris, you know, I think our approach is page some litigation, not, you know, directed to the attorney and then I can ask his attorney if I can have communication with them. I mean, they've made it more difficult, I'm sorry.
I, I don't, I don't want to see this go to the next step, which is now she, the attorney, goes to the county and indicates we aren't doing anything of what we just told them, we're following the pond standard on this issue Tyler brought up. That is not going to be a good situation.
Well.
So let's just tell them the truth, we're going to follow the pond standards right now, as we have told them in a letter already, according to Tyler. That's it, that's what we've done. We're following the pond standards on maintenance of the ponds.
And we've got that standard currently in committee.
It could be two years, she, the.
To look at.
Could be three years before that gets known.
I know, but you know, if you want to know what's going on, that's what's going on. We're adhering to existing standards while those standards are also in committee to be evaluated and reviewed for potential future enhancements or implications.
I don't have a problem with that.
And if he has any specific issues.
Please bring it to the committee or Chris.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I still want the county to come back and say, "You told us you were following the standards and the standard says you're supposed to be doing this and nobody's doing anything."
Or you're non-responsive.
Yeah.
Well, I think that cat's already out of the bag because we already told them we were.
Yeah, what might be the easiest way is, because I do have to get consent of his attorney to communicate with him directly, is if I'll draft this up and send it to Chris and then Chris can say, "I'm responding for the district." We are, you know, to answer your question, we are adhering to the pond maintenance standards. If you want any further input, since it's under study, feel free to attend the committee meetings. I think that's the easiest, cleanest way to do that.
We're also better include in there as our budget allows. Within, within budget, budgetary restraint.
Well, I don't know.
I, I, you know, I think we'll leave that out because I think that some people would say.
It's like you, just because you don't have the money doesn't mean you can't, you don't follow the rules.
Yeah, but don't, don't, don't make the admission that you don't have enough money to do your maintenance. Don't go down that road.
I wasn't saying that, I just said it's a budgetary restraint.
Yeah, the district's goal and plan is to adhere to its pond maintenance standards. Now, we would have enough money to do it if it wouldn't charge us for the utilities under their blanket.
You're going to, you're going to, you're going to put that as a footnote.
Please contact your commissioner.
Feel free to forward.
Go, go to DOT and get our money.
And one other, we're finally wrapping up the cleaner phase two, we just have one document we need to find to record until we can wrap that up. I mean, it's ninety-nine point nine percent there, it's one one percent. Yes, sir.
When you get the last one percent, are you going to write the check with the creator?
Not me, I'm going to, Mr. Mann is going to be the one that we're going to ask.
And I was asked again, they have, you know, no ticking, no laundry.
I will ask Charles to do that, yes.
They've already agreed in writing verbally.
And they've agreed, my correspondent, I think it myself and those other.
Yep, but this last thing, when will that be done? The last document?
When we find the last document, it's a warranty deed that may have been reshuffled when, you know, some reorganization of files took place.
I was just looking for a date.
So is South Florida, so is everybody. And if, in my, the approach is if we can't find that one, we'll ask them for another one, it's just, gladly give it to us to get this off their plate too. Oh, I've wanted to get it done for the last couple of weeks, Bob, yeah, thank you. I'm hoping next week, quite frankly.
Anything else on your list? All right.
Question over here.
Yeah, I'm going to start down here, question from Kathy.
All right, the ADA website, do we have a date when that might be finally completed?
Shooting for the next board meeting. Leslie has resurrected all the documents involved and sent them to me with the proposed changes, so shooting for next board meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Vai, any questions?
Uh, uh, no, Madam Schaefer.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, the, the FPL easement was the.
I've got several on here.
Yeah, it's mainly, it's my getting that ZVL out to the counties who are comfortable because what was asked by WCI and R did not address the issue.
Continuation, I had the FPL easement Commerce Lakes Drive East with the POA, Fairway Lakes Office Park with the POA and Town Lakes, all three of those, want to try to get those, get those in, in-house, get that done.
I guess, you know, right now, the way it stands, we, the board could authorize the litigation to proceed and we could do, I could bring back a proposed budget for the next board meeting for those three matters, to get a trustee appointed and then have a trustee convey it, if you wish, I can do that.
If, if we take and do this, I'm trying to think of what's coming on Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes. If we give the county Commerce Lakes Drive East that we own, which is what, five hundred, six hundred, eight hundred feet, then that section from basically Daniel's Preserve all the way to Daniels becomes no man's land. Now would be the time to do it, but we can't transfer to the county that that we don't have.
Correct, and one of the.
So it'd be nice to get Commerce Lakes Drive East done as quick as possible so that we make it as a part of the total package that we give to the county, the whole kit and caboodle.
Now, we may have some, you know, the, the folks, the, one industrial, I think we used to be calling Teleflex in the past.
Yes.
They were willing to, you know, cooperate, Sean Ellis is their attorney, but one of the rubs was the cost of bringing the road up to standards and who would pay for that? I know Chris had obtained some quotations for various activities. I think milling was one of them and there was some striping was the biggest cost, as I understand it. So that, that becomes the question, we bring back the board, what do we want to ultimately tell the people? That the district will take it, you establish whatever association you need to for whatever length of time to convey that roadway segment of Commerce Lakes and we, the district, will agree to, won't separately bill you for that, absorb into our general fund, I mean, that's.
Or we assess, or we assess the benefit.
To Daniel's Preserve and the.
To every, everybody that's on that road.
The, the board has the ability to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, I can't recall if they were not happy about that prospect, I think they were not.
I think they said as long as no money was involved, they weren't going to make a payment.
The county, the county made it clear and we've learned by seven, six lessons, that we had to pay, we didn't have to pay, WCI had to pay, and we, I guess we did. We had to pay to upgrade those roads.
Yes.
So, I, that, that POA that's, that left them, left it defunct, was owned by those very people that won it for free. So if the POA was still in existence and they wanted to turn it over, those same people would be paying. The problem is, is you've got Daniel's Preserve, I don't think they were a part of the POA.
Uh, you're correct.
That, that's what complicates it.
What we may want to do is at the first meeting in November, bring this back so we can have a full recommendation and the idea about who's going to pay for it. The district can, the board can, next year, assess the properties that we believe benefit, get Russ to do an assessment methodology, press wire to do that.
Well, the, the, the issues right now is the FPL easement is going to get into some of our infrastructure improvements that we want to do on the capital, on wastewater and on irrigation. So we need the FPL easement and then, and then the Commerce Lakes just falls in line. But I know you're right, the county's going to come back and say, "If that needs striping, that needs resurfacing," who's going to pick up the tab?
Well, I think it's more of a, just standards, meeting standards, no, that's what.
Do you have a dollar value, Chris?
I, I do have a report and the, the paving was, they said it was still, had ten years or more useful life left in it. The only immediate concern was the striping because it's not visible at the moment.
So what do you have down there? We have five hundred, six hundred ERUs down there, ballpark?
I don't know.
Maybe six hundred in that.
County Daniel's Preserve.
County Daniel's Preserve, six hundred, ballpark? So what are you talking about, twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars?
Yes, striping, I believe, was right around twelve to fifteen thousand and I forget what the paving estimate was, but it wasn't a big number. The roadway's intact, it's.
Thirty-six thousand total?
I'd say approximately.
Divided by six hundred, what is that? Six hundred? Six hundred dollars, yeah. So that's what the assessment per EDU or ERU down there would be, ballpark?
Thirty-six thousand by six hundred? Is it sixty dollars each?
Six, six, six hundred in, six.
Sixty.
Sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars each.
Sixty dollars each. Sixty dollars each.
Yeah, and, and.
Sixty dollars each, I, I can't see anybody who would be down there would be complaining about that to get rid of that road.
We thought the same thing, you know, quite frankly, and it was one of those where, okay, because the maintenance in the future will be the district globally, right, unless the district wants to.
No, it'll be counties.
Oh, if we give the county their whole roadway stretch.
Yeah, yeah. To me, that's not a bad deal, it's a one heck of a lot better price than we paid for Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive.
So Chris, I guess our task would be, maybe, first meeting in November, we'll meet with the Daniel Reserve folks and Sean Ellis and say, "Here's, here's the plan, here's, we're going to recommend you guys."
Otherwise it sets a.
Tell me to oppose it or oppose it.
Otherwise it sets a no man's land for the next ten, fifteen years.
Otherwise the board has no interest.
Has no interest.
We'll, we'll mention it to make it very clear, black and white.
Okay.
And do we know that, that the county is open to taking those roads?
I don't know.
Taking that road?
Taking that road?
That's part of the leverage.
Part of the conversation.
That's part of the conversation.
When they were here, they did indicate that they would consider taking all of it.
The fact that it ties into Daniel's, it's, it's a through road, there's no doubt about it. It's used by everybody, so.
Yeah, they probably look at it as a plus to them to take trips off of Daniel's Parkway. We, you know, we try to internalize traffic generation and trips, that's the general goal of traffic.
Well, and, and with the development within that sector.
Yes.
Projected over the next couple of years.
If you, if you internalize the trip generation, you keep it outside and then they won't have to expand Daniel's Parkway to eight lanes. I mean, that's ultimately part of their goal, probably.
Anything else, eh? District management. Quickly, Bob, and, and say who you are.
I'm Geppert Pelican Preserve and this is just an information to the board, but the ponds work group has asked the district manager and the district attorney to see what it takes to start putting legal leverage or liens against the construction bond in Pareto and Pestoia because Lenar obviously is not going to meet the demands of the permit criteria manual. We've given him over a year to do this.
Yeah, we're still talking those downspouts.
Well, we talk about it, they do nothing with it. So they have requirements and I'm tired of talking to them, writing them letters they're ignoring. So we've asked to start the formal process, is there a bond and how do we get it? So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Plus twenty percent.
District management.
I got that one, I think we're on new system server and IT options.
Okay.
Alan?
Hello, everybody, I'm Alan Bilzikowitz from Janopi.
Would you say your name, please?
Sure, Alan. Bill Zickowitz.
Bill Zickowitz.
Yes, sir, Alan works.
He's running for, for president for South Bend.
I call Cleveland, couldn't pronounce it.
Alan B.
Or Buffalo.
Chris, have you got the? So I just wanted to kind of introduce myself, we've been working, going on almost two years now, I'm somewhat new to the district. We've been doing network management, also helping with email and other things that the district uses. Recently, you guys probably know as well as I do, there was some local issues with the AC system, I think tail end of July, and that ended up damaging the server to the point where, you know, major, you know, potential data loss, we were able to recover everything. And to date, the district is running on hardware that we own that we're just kind of loaning to keep you guys up and running. With that, I've provided this estimate to put in a new system. The previously failed server is actually back in use as a backup box. So that's the hardware that failed previously, the hard drives failed due to an overheat. We've replaced the damaged parts, so we're still making use of that initial investment and proposing a new server ultimately to secure your data and get you guys running full speed. Our loaner hardware is doing its job, but it's not, you know, a viable long-term solution. Alongside that, there's a replication server listed here and, put simply, I'm sure if anyone's reading the headlines, ransomware and viruses are quite a big deal. A lot of people are getting hit with this and then asked to pay or being down. I think recently the county was down, I think last week, maybe the week prior, yeah. And kind of similar situation with you folks, when the server died from the overheat, there were good backups in place and we immediately started restoring them. But if you've got a lot, a large amount of data, rather, a lot of time is spent watching things restore and waiting for systems to come back up. So hence the replication piece here, you know, this proposal is not only a production server to run everything throughout the day, it's also a target for replication. So once a day, a complete copy is made locally. So if the server gets hit with ransomware, if it overheats, God forbid, hopefully that problem solved, we're able to bring you guys back up faster. I know I can get your data back, it's how quickly can I do it?
Hey, now, real quick around that, so all the, all the backups that we have are housed on location, correct?
Incorrect, when I initially met the district, that was correct. We've got a pretty, we make pretty strong recommendation for off-site backup.
Okay, that's what, that's my point, so we got redundancy.
It's now a requirement of ours, any client of ours, it's pretty much a requirement. So since day one with us, the district's had localized backups and off-site.
And off-site redundancies.
Yes, sir. And, and they're both important, they serve their purposes, you know. Had I had to restore from the cloud only when we had that overheat situation, it wouldn't have been a couple of days, it would have been, you know, a long time waiting on downloads.
So you got, we have our off-site backup in the event of a catastrophe.
Yes, sir.
You've got your onsite replication, so you can flip the switch in the event that your primary fails.
And bring it back up, yes, sir. In addition to, so to back up a little bit, you've got the off-site piece that goes nightly, that's all files data. The, also nightly is a local copy of all the files, so that's a traditional backup. Someone gets a, you know, an infection, hey, I deleted a file, and then there's also the replication piece and that's more for expeditious restore.
And what about the air conditioning, did you get that fixed, did I hear you say?
Yes, sir, that's been addressed, you know, I, not, I haven't done it firsthand.
I know, but I thought, I thought I heard you say that it's been fixed and I wanted to, I wanted to make sure my hearing is good enough to understand that it's been fixed because a new server isn't going to be new very long if we don't have the air conditioning to support it.
Yes, sir, if it gets hot again, it will not be good, Chris, I believe that's been resolved.
We, we took a couple of steps with that and one, we'll be putting a detection unit in the new server that'll send a signal out and we also put a new AC unit in and a new thermostat controlled. And I have to mention that we had this close to similar situation before when the power went out, the digital thermostat didn't reset the system and the temperature went up. So I called up the company and they said, "Oh, you have this wireless one, you need a hardwired thermostat for it to come back on." So I said, "Fine, install it, four hundred ninety-nine dollars, put it in." When this happened, what happened, the guy came out, he goes, "Oh, well, that thermostat high wire doesn't work with this unit, you're still running on your wireless one." So they, they did comp the new thermostat on the five hundred and.
They're, they're no longer on our vendor list?
Well, they, they actually do a very good job and they apologized profusely. It was really the tech they sent out that wasn't used to that type of unit and we got a very similar one, a newer model that works, installed it and we took the existing one and moved it into the formerly known as the hot box. So that area is now climate controlled. So we have two fail safes, one, we can check the temperature from our phones on it and it's wifi and two, they have the temperature sensor on the server.
At some point, we're going to have an annex out here in the parking lot with four, five or six, I think six, officers.
Yes, sir.
Have, have you decided where this replacement server is going to be located?
I think, at least to my knowledge, it's going to be in the same location of the current server.
Back here?
Yes, sir, kind of between the offices and the warehouse space. Yeah, and it's kind of a logical place due to other network infrastructure, wiring, all the internet connections come in there. You know, it, it could be moved, I don't know if this new structure is as hardy as this building.
No, and that room it's in is.
Block.
It's not just.
Yeah, that's a pretty solid. It's the black hole of service.
It makes sense, but it makes sense, I just, but I just wanted to hear him say.
Yeah, that's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and, and you're going to, you're going to be able to serve, serve the, the new officers from the configuration that you've been working on?
Yes, sir, so, and I think there'll be more on this later, but that building comes pre-wired from the, you know, vendor that's providing that.
Yeah, I've heard that before.
Well, yeah, and we can keep them honest, so there's two pieces, there's the internal wiring there. I've been tasked and, and I've got multiple vendors I can work with to help you guys figure out the piece of getting this building connected via fiber to that temporary structure.
Thank you.
Certainly. Go ahead.
So Alan, we, we talked a little earlier and I think this is something that's, you know, a, a, a have to do because we've got to, we've got to replace the temporary server that's in place, we've got to create redundancies and, because we have to have that for today. What I'd like to see is, is an expansion plan on where we should be going to drive efficiencies, give us data now, put us in environment where, like we were talking before about, you know, segmenting our population so that the board can have a shared calendar or even operate it from the cloud or, and the staff has capability to do, you know, more off-site virtual reporting or access to files and.
Sure.
And also from our residents' perspective, how do we give them, you know, better access to, to data and documents, really that type of thing? So that's what I'm looking at is, I know this is something we have to do today, it's a Band-Aid, but where do we need to be looking at in, in the future from an IT perspective?
Sure.
And just in your, for your recommendation.
So try to not give a nebulous answer, but there's a lot of pieces. Right now, for instance, emails all with Office 365, it's with Microsoft, for better or worse, you know, there's a cornucopia of options for doing just that one piece, the email, and there are certain cases where you might use a Google product, a Microsoft product or even bring it in-house depending upon your goals, you know. You certainly pay, I won't say a premium, but there's an increased cost of having it off-site, but then again, it's kind of nice that communication keeps going even if this building's without power.
Right.
You know, we have hurricanes, we have everything else, there's a reason off-site backups aren't stored, you know.
And it is nice to be able to go to your 365 mail or your Gmail and not be server dependent.
Correct, correct, you know, dependent on this location or one piece of equipment at this location, absolutely. So, you know, I'd be happy to get more involved, but it's really going to take someone getting more involved with the process of what data needs to be made available to the public. I'm sure there is some now, is it out there in the best format?
That's something you can do, because I didn't expect you to solve it or answer the question today.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what we're, I mean, we need, we've talked about having our utilities roadmap and basically looking out three to five years. I think we need to do the same thing with our technology infrastructure, especially as we like to expand and I, I just don't feel like we're optimal at this point on, on many different levels. And we don't have an in-house technician and I'm sure when we go to you, it's for very specific tasks, you know, keep the lights on, you know, forward thinking, but more from a risk and liability perspective. I think we need to build out a three to five year plan on expansion and what that looks like. So I'll just, I'll, I'll get with Chris to maybe figure out how we can get some, get you the information that you need in order to, to come back at some point in the future and say, "This is where you should be looking at for a roadmap."
Sure, and I'd love to help do that.
Okay.
You want to make a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Chris is in here, my question is, doesn't our new budget start October first?
Yes.
Yes.
How are we going to pay for this from our last year's budget then?
My question exactly.
Transfer. We.
Roll over.
Well. We've recently submitted a list of some of those projects that were in this past year's budget and we won't carry those funds over, some of the funds we're getting ready to expend, we've let ST know that it's not included in the carryover.
That makes sense.
Yeah, there, there was four or five projects, some fencing that we've literally finished up in the past couple of weeks and under the note to this, we said, "We'll be making this purchase in the next few weeks and the money will be expended in October." So it just won't be included in your carryover, carry forward.
So it'll just be deducted against.
Of course you know it is.
Me too.
And that same thing, we had some, we had some fairly large scale items we didn't get done or, you know, that weren't expended that were included and I just finished providing that list back to Sonya today.
So I'll make a motion to accept the new system server and IT option item in the amount of fourteen thousand or not to exceed fourteen thousand and that is for the primary server and the replication server. Is that good enough?
Yep, have a second?
He says fourteen thousand?
Yes.
Says sixteen.
Sixteen was in the budget and I think the estimate, estimate is fourteen.
Okay, yeah. So which one, the fourteen is correct, not the sixteen?
The sixteen is what we have budgeted.
Oh, okay. The fourteen is good enough.
Let's just go with the recommendation.
Not to exceed sixteen thousand, which we had budgeted.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Chris, while you're out, I just talked to Alan about putting together a technology roadmap and so there's just some questions he'll probably want to ask us, where do you want to go, what do we want to do? So we can kind of work, kind of gather some of that information and work with him.
Start prepping that for next year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Landing that.
Yep.
And we, we are backing up, we're doing some preliminary GIS work right now and map scanning and we are using Google Drive to store a lot of that information.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Modular office building purchase.
Sure, and bringing this item, the board previously, when we discussed it in July, said wait until the permits were issued and the development order was received September seventeenth. So I'm bringing back the proposed building purchase. The pricing hasn't changed from that date, it's still one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. The pricing hasn't changed from that date, it's still one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and forty-nine cents, and that includes the da, the data hub and all the furnishing in there, all the offices will come included, and data hub included. We have the FPNL power drop out there, the building permit's been submitted, the only thing the building department is lacking to issue that permit is the sign and seal hurricane tie-down plans, which they'll provide to us after we put the deposit on the building. So, the, the plan hasn't changed, it's the same six office common area with two workstation areas, including without a small conference table and bathrooms.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion, if the district manager will tell me from which year this is being saved.
That, that money is also continuing, we have three hundred and eighty-five thousand in the enterprise fund, or a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the general fund.
FY eighteen.
It's FY eighteen, and it, those funds on both sides will be carried forward. And, and in that money, we also, in July, presented that budget, and I will, I will bring it back at the next meeting to show you, because there's some other items we included in there with that funding, some shelving we were going to do in the background, some aluminum covers over our AC units outside, which will result, keep the equipment lasts longer, and also about a ten percent energy efficiency, painting the interior and redoing the floors in this building, and some different furniture, but I, I had that detailed list I presented, and I'll update it. And of course, the, the permitting fees from Tetra Tech are coming from that budget.
I'll make the motion to approve the staff recommendation as written during fiscal year eighteen.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Chairman, just one question, Chris, from the standpoint of the, the monies, fifty percent down, it says forty percent prior to delivery. Is that at delivery, what do they mean by prior to delivery?
When they finish building it and they're getting ready to deliver it.
Okay.
And this, this purchase is also...
It's a piggyback purchase on the cooperative agreement.
It's a piggyback on the IPA participants for local governments.
Thank you.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yay, we finally...
The, the lead time to get the building delivered is ten to twelve weeks. He said they're pretty backed up right now, so it'll be closer to twelve. But in the next few weeks, we'll finish up with the building permit. The only thing we have to do out back is some of the site prep, we already have to fill dirt down by the dog park for part of that, so Matt Tower is going to come in and prep the site, do the compaction and compaction tests. Once the building comes in, Bentley's under contract and did the power drop, it's, we'll be ready to connect. There won't be any waiting on Florida Power, that account's been set up. The water and sewer are right adjacent to the building, there's a cleanout right there, so it's going to be some minor plumbing and pouring the short sidewalk to connect to our existing sidewalk, and we plan on it being operational the first of the year, and I'll say the first week in January.
That's wonderful.
Tell them it's going to Freeport and get it here quicker.
It would be really nice to light the building up instead of the Christmas tree this year, so maybe we can do a building light, lighting ceremony instead of tree lighting?
And speaking of that, the next meeting, I'll be bringing the contract for the holiday event, and we're basically planning a similar event to last year, we'd have a couple more entertainers that'll be included. Fireworks will be there, and it'll be within budget, we think we can actually raise enough donation funds that will come in under budget on the event.
Nice. Okay, SRF design loan documents.
And this is the loan application for the, for the design loan, the attorney's letter, and we go through this same process and resolution every iteration of this, and you'll be seeing it again when we go through the construction loan part, and it's just approving the board resolution, the loan application, and Tony's has provided the letter of legal opinion, and we'll submit those to the DEP.
Question, Madam Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Chris, the third paragraph there has an attachment for Gateway Charter, can you explain to me what that's about?
Well, they asked for the charter, but that's, that's basically...
One ninety is the charter.
Chapter one ninety.
Ninety is the charter.
Articles of incorporation for the district itself.
Oh!
They asked for a charter.
Not the school bill.
No, mostly, they're, they're dealing with local governments, they may have a charter, so...
Well, you threw me a curve there. I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That brings us to consent agenda items. Does anybody have anything on the minutes that they want to discuss? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Same move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to supervisor comments, Mrs. Flaherty, I'll start at your end of the deus tonight.
I do have a few.
A few?
Yeah. A few. Do you want me to start with positives or negatives?
Oh!
Or the top.
I'll let you go either way.
They're all the same.
Okay. I would like, I would like permission next Fridays to use the grill that's in the, um...
Help yourself.
Okay, because I would like, and you can post this.
To use the what?
Grill.
Okay. You can guess it around.
I thought you were going to use a sewer cleaner, I couldn't figure it out.
I'm not going to.
I looked that for.
Okay. I'll give you, no, so they can post it, I don't know where you can post. Just for, just for you, what you know, I want to put hot dogs and chips and have some drink for the employees of Gateway.
Well, isn't that nice?
Is that the positive or the negative?
That's the positive.
The negative is they told my con dogs.
They're all veggie dogs.
We actually use that grill on a semi-regular occasion that we'll cook some stuff up for the staff to come back and have lunch, yeah.
So, I'm gonna...
Thank you, I know they'll appreciate it.
And I hope so. Even if it haven't hurt to see me cook though, yeah.
It's kind of hard to mess up hot dogs, though, so I'm going to give you a thumbs up, good effort.
Chips.
Ball mark does.
The question I have, now I guess would be for the chair, our pack in Stony Brook minutes are not seem to be in our book anymore. Are we going to just see what's going on with it?
I believe that the reason that they're not in there this time is because Mr. McCulca has been out of town, and he didn't make them available for the book, but I will have him put those in the book for the next meeting, how about that?
Thank you. All right. Could you explain what happened with the villages of Stony Brook? I got this email about the leak, and there was a problem, could you explain?
Sure.
How it was resolved and...
Well, how it was resolved and somewhat unresolved, but they had a...
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I didn't hear it either.
They had a, they had an irrigation break, and they had a line break in the back, and they called us and asked us, you know, to shut the system down, so we went and shut down the three meters, and the water didn't stop completely. It started backing down slowly, but it was still bubbling out, and the fellow called, and then he called again the next morning, and he said, well, when Terry was here, he could shut it down, and I said, we've shut all the meters off, there's no water running through the meter, so there's either a bad valve in the system...
Or we got a bypass.
Or we have a backfeed, which we still haven't gotten to the, the bottom of it, so we turned the meters back on, they continued to run, and we told the irrigation guy, all you need to do is go back about a foot, put a valve on your line, shut it off, and make your repair. The owner of the company, I spoke to him, and he said, well, our guys are busy, and we'll come out there tomorrow morning, and I said, fine, we'll shut the meters back off, and they went out there and went back a foot and put a valve on it and shut the water off and made their repair. Unfortunately, it took two and a half days for them to do it, and if I knew it would take that long, I would have just had our crew cut it back and put a valve on it, but, and the fellow admitted, he said, hey, Thursday, we had our crews out, we were busy, and then when it first happened, it was under pressure, and there was a safety issue, and so I sent you a picture, here's the water coming out now, it was just gurgling out.
What was the issue, but why we just didn't shut the water off? That's what I...
Well, it, it wouldn't shut off all the way, we shut the meters off like we typically would do, but there was still water coming into the system, and we had a meeting about it, a follow-up, and we're going to go out there and pull the valve and see, because typically, that's either a backfeed from some other part of the system, which we ran into that at Hampton Park, and discovered that they had un-metered water that they had tapped into our lines on Gateway Boulevard, and for years had been feeding without paying a water bill, and there was...
Because it sounded like that we just wouldn't shut the water off, and you know...
It, it, it physically...
But that wasn't the case.
First thing I thought was a bypass.
No, we had, we had three staffers out there, not only did we shut those off, but we went into the community and started shutting valves off. So, we'll be going out there and pulling that valve past the meter, because typically, when you see it weeping like that, it's either a backfeed or that valve has just malfunctioned.
But this was all reuse, not potable?
No, it was irrigation water, and what, what ended up happening too is with that water pouring in the lake, I'll call Development Services and said, you know, they won't shut this thing off, just wanted to let you know, they're pumping reclaimed water into the pond, and I've been working with the HOA, and I also had a, a conversation on the phone with the owner of the company, and it was a very good conversation we had, now their field tech was a little bent out of shape, but I sent a, a summary of what happened with that, with that whole process that morning to the HOA, and talked to the company president, and about two hours later, that letter fired off that came from the field tech who was out there working. He seemed, and he made a comment about, our guys wouldn't do something, because Chris wouldn't let them, and I said, what I told them to do is shut the water off, and we tried to do it, and it didn't cut off. So, but we'll be going out there and on that main meter, replacing that valve, which, and if we hit that, and it isn't, then we do have a backfeed somewhere, and I also made a call to Rural Water, because they have a ground penetrating radar unit and some data balls you can put on different valves, it'll tell you where water's moving, so we can see if there is actually a backfeed, so we've taken steps to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you for that explanation. Did you come up with the cost of the second notice that was sent out for our budget hearing?
No, I don't, I don't have that figure, I'll find out then.
Okay, thank you. Are they finished with the construction on eighty-two and Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive?
Yes.
Okay, do you think the, the construction signs, both on Gateway and Griffin Drive, can be taken down?
I can ask them.
Okay, thank you.
And are those construction signs from the roadwork, or is that for the school now?
No, it's, it's from the roadwork, it says, "End construction." So, I don't want people, you know, all right. The, the street sign from, I always say it wrong, Magnolia Lakes, did I say it right? Okay. It's, there's the wrong street sign, it says Little Gem Drive, can we get a new street sign that says Little Gem Circle? Because that's the name of the street.
Sorry. I asked for it a while back, I hope that should be, they say, be very...
I mean, you know, people like...
Just take a big market.
I was going to, but I didn't reach it.
So, wait, so wait, there's...
If only your husband was tall enough.
It's Little Gem Circle?
Yeah, Little Gem Circle.
And it's...
We don't want the postman to get confused.
And it says Little Gem Drive? And that's in Magnolia Lakes?
Yes.
Oh, I thought Little Gem was in Stony Brook.
Nope.
We have a gemstone.
We have a gemstone.
Okay.
Flavia put you up to that?
I got, I just read by emails.
She's the supervisor of the people.
I'm not finished, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't know if the, our attorney or our district manager could write a letter to the school district. There, I've heard that they want to take the oak trees down behind our sign on Griffin and eighty-two, and that would be, make it not look consistent on both sides, so I was wondering if there was some way we can contact them and ask them to please leave the oak trees up, so we would have, um...
We can, we can ask them about that, I had a discussion with them about it, and where our sign is, is actually on school board property. We have an easement now that they gave us for that, and one of the reasons they want to take those trees down is that's right where the crosswalk's going to be, crossing eighty-two on the other side, in the main entry for the walking area into campus. So, they look at it as a public safety issue of reducing the visibility on that corner, and I thought they had already started to pull those trees down, but maybe they've rethought it, but I'll check with them and see, but that's why they want to take them down, because that is going to be the, literally on the other side of that sign is the main walk-in into campus, and when you have all that walking traffic that's going to be coming in from Lehigh Acres, and then people trying to come in and out and off Griffin Drive, that's what they're concerned about, is the line of sight.
That's an at-grade crossing?
Yes. And it's going to be right, right there where that sign is, and those trees are, so if people are coming across and people are making a right turn out of Griffin onto eighty-two, it creates another problem with seeing where the students are, people crossing. But I'll ask them.
Thank you. No, I'm not finished. Ellen and I went around last week with some landscaping problems. Do you know if Mainscape can get that list, and will they be addressing them, because none of them have been addressed yet so far?
I haven't seen the list, yeah.
Okay. I know I got a copy of it, so I'll ask, I know she sent it to Glenn, okay? Should I ask her to send it to you too?
No, no, I'll take, I'll take a look, I'm sure he's conveyed it to them, and, and that depends on, is that a maintenance thing, a regular thing they do, or is this something?
No, this is, these are things that should have been, these are maintenance things that are reading, things, very common things.
Sure.
Okay, and also, could you at the same time contact Mainscape? The irrigation, when you come into Stony Brook, right in their way, right around corner, is on at night, and is on for like two hours straight?
What's on two hours straight?
Irrigation from Stony Brook.
You're saying, just coming in the entrance on the corner?
Yeah, when you come past, past the gates, it's right there, it's sprinkling. I, I went out last night around six o'clock and came back around quarter to eight, and it was still on, so that's a kind of a long time to be on. So, I don't know if it, there's, the timer was broken or something, so I figured I'd yes, yeah.
They're using the same timers as the soccer field.
And could you tell me how the, the pond committee went, did they have a good progress?
You'd have to ask, ask Flavia, I don't attend the pond committee meetings. I heard it was very interesting.
We probably should add updates to our agenda for ponds.
For pond committee, yeah.
Okay.
Let them have their next meeting, which I think is the fourteenth.
We don't need any more than once a month.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We're in the process of contacting Lee County and going over some questions that we have in regards to development order as a, as a whole, how to read them and what exactly they mean. So, we had our second meeting, Connie has decided that she, she didn't want to participate in the meeting, and then we have Will Glassy, I think his last name is, that took her spot, and he's also a resident at Gateway Greens, and he's a marine biologist FGCU, so great help to us. So, once I head from the county on the fourteenth, we, I can come back to the board at the next board meeting and give a small recap of where we stand.
All right, thank you very much.
What was the attendance, just out of curiosity, did you have a hundred percent, or?
For members? No, we had, Bob Gepper was out of town, which we knew, he left, and, but he, he, we did follow up today, he's coming on the fourteenth.
Bob's was an excused absence?
Yes, he got a free pass, but otherwise, Jim was not here, but he was attended over the phone.
Okay. So, you, you got the participation you were looking for?
Yes, yes.
Started off on a good foot?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and now I'm finished. Mr. Guy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
No, I have nothing.
Mr. Tinkle?
So, I get to bring it up. Okay, I've been inundated every Saturday after golf by the people living in Stony Brook, younger guys on the golf course, that this parking issue, so I got involved and started reading documents, specifically three sixteen point oh oh six three B, relative county jurisdiction on the roads. I contacted the Lee County Sheriff's Office to find out how this was going to be done, and just talked to Sergeant Levine, and he was the one, after I bounced through three separate calls, and he just made it clear, he said, I'm not touching this with a ten-foot pole. You got to go through... You gotta go through DOT." So I got ahold of Randy Surchi, the director, and Randy said, "You need to talk to Stephen Jensen." And we worked with Steve on the, the road turnover, so at least I knew who he was. And started asking him questions about, told him about Stony Brook and he was well aware of Stony Brook. And asking him questions about this parking. And his position is that if the county is going to, what's the word I want? Monitor it, the police, the sheriff's office? Enforce it, thank you. That they would require that we have to enter into an agreement with the, the county on it. And that means that things like the roads would have to be shown to be MUTCD compliant. The first one is you have to have a free flow of traffic. And Steve defined all these. He wants a minimum of ten to twelve feet for trucks. He wants twenty-five feet from mailboxes. He wants thirty feet from intersections. He wants fifteen feet from fire hydrants. And he says, "If you want to go no parking, I want a vote of all eligible voters to the tune of sixty-six and two-thirds percent in the affirmative, or otherwise we will not go with no parking signs."
And who is this?
Steve Jensen, Lee County, he's the head of, of Lee County DOT on this issue. And so the, the issue, we got talking about it. And bottom line was, he couldn't figure out, nor could Sergeant Levine, how the parking sign, the no parking signs ever got put up in the first place. How they ever got put up. And the more I look back at it, I'm, and read three sixteen, I encourage everybody to read three sixteen point oh oh six three B. If you read that, you wonder how we got those put up. I'm of the opinion that we should not have put those up. This is a mess down there. I've got aerial photos, I started playing with them and drawing lines on them. And it's, it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare with all these restrictions that you've, you've got. However, when I brought this up to Steve, he says, "I am not going to touch no parking signs throughout a community where you first of all have any selective enforcement, because that puts our sheriff's office in a bad position." And second of all is that we've been down this road before and he says, "It's, it's simple. If you get seven hundred and seventy-seven voters, I want two-thirds of them to comply with it by a vote. Then we'll, we'll listen to the no parking." So my deal is, is that, and I'm willing to delay at least a, a, a action on a motion to immediately remove the signs to the next meeting where we can have a further discussion on it. But what I would really like to do is get rid of this nightmare once and for all and make a motion that we authorize Tony to immediately proceed with getting an AGO on the transfer of, well, we talked earlier to the gentleman that was here, of transferring the road rights of way exclusive of utilities that are owned by Gateway. But that would include your landscaping, the road right away, the road, the sidewalks, street signs and streetlights. And have Tony get ahold of, to get an AGO opinion of how we do it. As I understand, there's some other stuff going on that this similar deal is being looked at and another community is doing something very similar where an HOA, or I'm sorry, a CDD is going basically out of business and they're transferring all of their stuff to an HOA. So if it can be transferred to an HOA, it'd be real interesting to find out how they did it. It's very possible, of what Tony has told us in the past, that they come back and tell us that the law doesn't allow it. But with that and the fact that we need to try to get this resolved, they may come back and tell us this needs legislative action. In which case, I'm sure that we can get with people to do this in the name of a community in Lee County and make it a one deal and put the spotlight right straight on selling these, this asset through a bid to the Stony Brook Master HOA for a dollar. Nobody else is gonna want the dang thing. So my motion is to authorize our attorney to get an AGO on the issue of transferring the Stony Brook road rights away, roads, sidewalks, streetlights and street signs to the Master HOA.
I think without this being an agenda item, I think it's unfair to the residents of Stony Brook that might have wanted to have come in and spoken to this item for it to be an agenda item. We also, we have the Stony Brook Advisory Committee that's already started working on the tasks with the map to show where there is a possibility of there even being legal parking that was requested previously. There, this was gonna take time, so they needed to work on that. And I just think to go off in a different direction than what we were, we had already tasked the Stony Brook Committee to do, just seems.
Well, this isn't a Stony Brook issue. It's a CDD issue and I think that by reading, if everybody else has read this and come up with a different opinion, great. But you read it and I think you'll find that we made a serious mistake years ago authorizing the manager to install those signs. I think that board made a very serious mistake. And I believe the county backs me up on that.
I, go ahead, Mrs. Slardy.
Well, I was going to make a motion to table it, so it would be on the agenda for the next meeting. So that way, any resident within CDD could come and address this issue.
I get the motion to table.
Motion on the floor to table this item?
But why wouldn't we just, why wouldn't we wanna look at all available options?
Well, I.
I mean, cuz I.
I, I don't have a problem with looking at all available options, but it's like we're, we're rushing this through when Stony Brook Advisory Committee and the board president there had asked for additional time and they would come back with recommendations. And now we're gonna not allow them to do that.
The AGO, I'll, I'll drop, I'll, I'll consent to dropping the motion of taking the signs down and delay that. But I will not consent in dropping the request for the AGO. Cuz in two weeks, we're still gonna wanna know the question, "How do we get these roads over to Stony Brook?"
You're not gonna get an answer from the AG for two months.
Don't, don't know, Bill.
What I might suggest, at the risk of being caught in a crossfire, what I might suggest is that if this is tabled for two weeks, it would give me time to draft the proposed question to be asked to Attorney General. And that can be part of it, cuz I think I would like the board's consensus as to the actual question.
Well, the question is simple, Tony. The question is, can Gateway Services CDD, just like we sold Gateway Boulevard or gave Gateway Boulevard to the county, I wanna give the assets of the roads of Stony Brook to the deal and it's, it's to an HOA? And that's, that's the problem right now is.
There's something even above that, is do we have the ability to change parking or impose parking restrictions in that community?
We've got, we've got a motion on the floor to table this item. And so I'm gonna call the vote on that, all in favor of.
Aye. What are we tabling?
Ann's already withdrawn, or he said.
I withdrew, I withdrew.
You didn't make the first motion on the signs.
We're tabling the issue.
Tabling.
Well, the issue of including the AGO? No, I don't agree with that.
Well, I think Tony said he would, he could go and draft the language for the next board meeting.
There's, there's nothing for us to, to approve of, I mean, it's.
Believe me, I've done a number of AGO requests. And so it's, it's important to know how you frame the question and what you outline in there. So I think I could give you the guts and the skeletal of what I would suggest to be the question if the board was to go that way.
I also like the Stony Brook Advisory Committee, their next meeting is October ninth. I'd like for them to have an opportunity to discuss this and then bring it back, which I don't think would be in time for the next meeting. So I'd like to table this till November's first meeting. Do you want me to change my motion to table till November's first meeting?
Well, I don't think.
I'll change the second to November.
It's a supervisor comment, what?
Cuz he made a. Cuz he made a motion, so she's making a motion to table it. Which, which supersedes. So that it's on the agenda, November can be discussed.
Motion to table.
Motion to table is a preferential motion, it needs to be voted on.
Right, but it's a new item that's come up. And so I would suggest that the chair, ask if any members of the public wish to comment on this item that was not on the agenda previously before the.
Even the tabled?
Yes.
Okay, any comments?
Yes. Warren Davis.
Please.
Come on down.
So we got you on the record.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't bring all the information I would, will have next week. Warren Davies from Stony Brook. Mr. Tinkle's information was relatively accurate. Personally, I don't think that three sixteen applies to Stony Brook at all. Background, I've been in traffic safety for over thirty years. From all levels, from enforcement up through writing and working with General Assembly in Ohio to set up traffic rules. The, in two thousand and nine, the board come here with a complaint of parking. A study was done by Tetra Tech. Not a very good study, it, it hit the high point of the roadway is not built sufficiently to have street parking. This is based on studies by the Association of State Traffic Planners. I don't have what the initials mean. And that's an association that has all the states in it. All their top traffic planners and engineers and safety people are part of it. They report to the Federal Highway Administration. So this is a pretty good, and it's mentioned in the, in the thing, in the study. The director at that time took that study, looked at it. The road is twenty-foot wide, you can't have a free flow of traffic if you have street parking. Made the decision and apparently he put the signs up. There was never any that I can find in the minutes where the board approved them or the board or was brought to the board. I can't even find where Tetra Tech was paid to do the study. And knowing Tetra Tech, I don't think they would have done the study if they weren't gonna get paid. It was a two-page operation, so it really wasn't that much. So now during this time, you've got ten years, and there's been all kinds of, you can point fingers at a whole bunch of people. You can point fingers at the HOA because they were enforcing the traffic rules in Stony Brook, which they couldn't do because they're getting complaints from the residents of speeding and parking, et cetera. So they get all these things. Can't find too much where it really come to this board. In January of two thousand and seventeen, someone come here and spoke about traffic and parking in Stony Brook. And the comment was, "We're not gonna discuss that." So for nine, ten years, we have nothing. Parking, every time something happens, bingo. You see it on, on the social pages, you see it around there, everybody gets up in arms. Stony Brook has done all kinds of things to try to rectify this, but they can't. It comes down to this, this board to make that decision. Taking the signs down, don't change the rules. No parking signs, don't change the rules. I don't understand how going to the county is gonna help us because the times I've talked to the county and some of the same people you have, Mr. Tinkle, and they said, "Those roadways in there are private roadways as far as they're concerned, they're not public. If they're not owned by the county, they're private." Now however you wanna look at that. But still, if you're going to have no parking or you're going to open it up, there's still rules on parking. You can't do all the different things you had and, and those all come from studies and studies and studies all the way down where people have adopted, 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 all the way down. And the county adopts most of the information coming from the Federal Highway Administration and from this other company. The parking, the roadway stuff, the best I can find, and I can't expound on it because I don't have three hundred dollars to buy the traffic book, is that the parking situation or the roadway widths is a non-regulatory recommendation by the Federal Highway Administration. Highly recommended because you can't have a free flow of traffic on a twenty-foot roadway. And you can have nine-foot lanes or ten-foot lanes, but you have a twenty-foot road, you put a car on it, those lanes are gone. And all of it comes down to, no matter how you wanna cut it, is traffic safety. I've dealt with traffic safety, I've had, I've investigated crashes. I've had all those different kinds of things. And if I was to have a crash on a Stony Brook road because a car was parked there, that car would be part of the contributing factor to the crash. Because they took away that two lanes that are supposed to be going back and forth. So the parking situation is something you folks have to decide or make rules on. And if you take the signs down, it's really not gonna do much because there's still rules. You mentioned, of course, the infamous thirty-foot mailbox. Can't park within thirty-foot of the mailbox on state highways. And the county has pretty something different. The US Postal Service says they don't have a rule. They go by whatever the county says, they don't care. Because if they pull up your mailbox and you're, and someone's parked in front of it, you're not getting mail. They're just gonna drive by.
It's a simple rule.
Very simple, it is, I mean, when you read their, their stuff. If they, they don't have to get out of the truck. Now, our mail person, every now and then she'll get out of the truck and put mail in the box if we have someone there. But that's cuz I give her Gatorade or water and stuff and you take care of the post people.
Same thing's true with the trash.
Yes, yes, I do that all the time. But I think it comes down and I think it's very important that this be tabled until at least next week. Because I think, I would like to think that people from Stony Brook would come and you'd hear both sides of the coin. Because, you know, there was, someone had posted or said there was seventy percent of the people want parking. And twenty-five percent don't want parking. Well, that seventy percent is fine, except I don't think that's a good number because most, half of those people, I'm sure, they, they don't want parking except when it benefits them.
Well, and I think if you even dig down deeper, I want to be quite honest, it's not that cut and dry. I think you've got fifteen, twenty percent that are absolutely opposed. Fifteen, twenty percent who are absolutely for, and then you've got that group in the middle, they're like, well, I'm on the fence.
If I'm gonna have a party, I'm gonna have my people parked, I don't have to make any arrangements.
It's really difficult to define.
My question on all of it is, and this is what came up in the meeting with the, the county, was who's gonna do the jurisdiction of this enforcement? As I understand it, the only one that can do it is the Lee County Sheriff's Office. And the Lee County Sheriff's Office will not do it unless the contract is signed. The contract can't be signed unless you've got Steve Jensen's approval. And Steve Jensen's approval requires two things, MUTCD compliance and a vote.
Now, when I talked to him, I got none of that, that information, but we, we talked about that.
How long, how long ago did you talk to him?
Oh, it's got, hard to say, I've talked to him a couple of different times, every time.
I just talked to him this week.
It happens.
I just talked to him. But, but the issue is, is that I don't have any problem with delaying it, I, I definitely wanna talk it. But the AGO, doesn't make any sense. And, and what are, what are we finding out from Fosdy? What is Fosdy saying, are, are they doing some concurrent research?
They're, we asked him for an opinion and they wanted to have a conference call to define it. Well, you know what exactly our questions were.
Well, the seventh, I wouldn't go.
I'd say my, my recommendation to the board, and you've already started some of it with an, with an AG's opinion that Tony's gonna do, but with all the turmoil and all the information, misinformation that's out there. And everybody reads the articles in the Gateway Sun. He writes pretty good information, but there's a lot of opinion stuff in there that really don't apply. He puts a lot of good information, again, some of it just doesn't apply. At this point, Tetra Tech, their little study just really don't, don't hold much water. I think they, we need to do, have someone, a traffic engineer, study this and look at all these different things so that when the board decides to make a decision on what they're gonna do, everybody has the same facts. Everybody has it from the same person instead says, "This is what is recommended, this is what is required." They have the, a, a good traffic engineer would have the resources to dig into these other organizations. Cuz I've read articles from other state agencies who say, and they're addressing areas like Stony Brook, that twenty-foot is most because people don't need street parking anymore. Because everybody has large garages, two and three-car garages. Of course, that kinda chuckles cuz you could drive around Stony Brook and find out the garages are the best storage space, but that's not our concern. Our concern needs to be traffic safety. And that's the one way I would, I would push totally is for traffic safety.
My point, my point on all of it though is to get, when we have the meeting. My point, my point on all of it, though, is to get, when we have the meeting, we need the county DOT, and we need the Lee County Sheriff's Office here, because they've made it clear, we do not have the authority to do the jurisdiction work. We don't have that authority.
I, I'd like to bring us back to the vote, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll hear it from me next week, too.
And will you repeat your motion?
Sure. I, I want to table this motion, to table this discussion until November seventh meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second to table this to November seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, I don't care. We, I, yeah, I'm fine with table on to the seventh.
Just, Ed, what's that statutory side? You wrote it?
Three sixteen point oh oh six three B.
What I'd like to see personally, like from the advisory committee, is, I think you said they got, they're working on, I thought staff was supposed to work on the-
With the, with the advisory committee.
Okay, and if that's in process, that's fine, but, I mean, look, I live in Stony Brook, and I'm on the fence. I, I could argue either way. And honestly, whichever we land on this, I'm fine with. I just want to make sure that all the information comes in and that we have, we have, you know, what are, what's within our legal rights to do and not do. And then if it really impacts Stony Brook, I need to have an outline of a policy that says, or a business case, or some data that says, this is why we want to go in this direction. If it's, if it's safety, it's liability, okay, fine. Then draft that out. Give me some data to support it, not just, you know, one person standing up and say, well, it's dangerous for kids to play out in the yard. Okay, or in the street. I get it, because I've got four boys. But there needs to be something more than that, because I guarantee you, the reason why I'm sensitive to this issue is because, you know, I read the Facebook posts and all this kind of stuff, and people email all the time, and I feel like there's, like I said, there's fifteen, twenty percent here, fifteen, twenty percent here, and in the middle. And everybody that wants a limited parking, I think, which really the, I think is the majority, or the small majority, no one can agree on what limited parking is. And if you say no parking, then it's no parking. I mean, even if there's a vendor out there, you think residents are going to be happy with somebody's landscaping truck parked in the front of their yard when they can't park there? Or if you say everyone, so there's, that's my issue. We need to come together, have some open dialogue, have true facts, recommendations, and then come together with a solution and kill it, because it's to me, the Pelican golf cart. And it drives me nuts.
That's what I thought was the direction the board gave to the staff and to the committee, is to come up with a set of proposed rules and procedures and then come back to the board, get the yea, nay, modified, however, and then formally do the formal rule of administration process.
Just make sure we're all clear on what the, what the rules and regulations are, and we all agree to them. There's so much information coming out of that. And it's really gray, and it's, I mean, to be quite honest, sometimes I'm confused on what is the real thing.
Right, and then have the board formally-
All the rules and all the regulations does not change the design of the road. The road is twenty-foot wide, and if you're going to put two lanes that can flow continuously, you can't have-
I get that, but as long as we're looking at, you know, we're not interpreting, right? As long as we're not looking, it's not open to interpretation.
And we can adopt it, once again, the board can say, as to district roads within Stony Brook, these are the rules as to parking. And again, that's what I understood. We're going to come back and go through the formal-
Do you have anything else?
If, if we get this and get the AGO, and they say we can sell it, all this goes away.
That's if we want it.
Well, that's the other thing, too.
The community may not want it.
The issue is every other community in the district, that's not the case.
One of the aspects, if anyone wants, has nothing else to read at some point in time, because back in two thousand and seventeen, this issue came, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen,
Everything.
Because two thousand and ten is not good database to start with, as far as any discussion, I would suggest. There's a memo I did in two thousand and seventeen for board's discussion, and it's two hundred and forty pages long. I can make additional hard copies. And it includes history, how we got here, I believe, including emails of Bill Knight, when he got the Tetra Tech report, the minutes of Stony Brook meetings.
I think that'd be, that'd be nice.
I think it's helpful, and it gives my, my legal opinion as to what could and could not be done at that time. And then, and number one, number two, as to the ability of a district to convey its roads to another entity upon termination or dissolution. That's a completely different issue that can happen. And, my big fat fingers. Once again, it's, what you can do, though, there's one district in Kier County, which I disagree with the legal advice, they've imposed a toll on non-residents to come to their community.
Mrs. Flaherty?
A user fee. Excuse me.
Okay, I would like a copy.
Okay, I will make, I will make the hard copies and send them to, it's two hundred and forty pages.
Well, if you can get them over here, then we can just swing by here and pick them up.
I'll do that.
Because we need them sooner or later. Give us time to digest it.
I'll send it tomorrow morning.
Yes, thank you. I just addressed Mr. Tinkle. I can do this. Mr. Tinkle, I have asked Attorney, like twice, about how it must go to turn over the roads back to Stony Brook. And he's told me that it's just not able to be done, because I inquired twice.
I'm hearing different story from other people.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I did inquire about that, too.
And Warren, Warren, will you make sure this is on the next advisory committee agenda?
I believe it, and we got the agenda. I believe that if something is, if not, I'll, I'll-
Has, has Stony Brook engaged their attorney to get a legal position on this?
No, but we can.
I mean, why wouldn't you? I mean, that's what-
He asked if we had, if we had engaged the Stony Brook attorney
Who is it?
to provide Darren Shute. And we can, we can-
Not that I'm aware of.
Can ask him.
I, I'm, I don't know him that well. I know, I know Tony has access to-
That'd be a good idea.
Well, but there's a, you know, Stony Brook's kind of vested interest. So wouldn't you want your attorney to weigh in on what you, what you have, what you can do and what you can't do? That would just make sense to me, right?
I have no problem. I've done in the past work with other councilmen.
Anything else, Mr. Tinkle?
No.
Move adjournment. And it is?
Six.
It may be in a, in fact, it actually may. I'll double check.
Do what?
And it may be, because this came up.
All of that?
It may be.
We don't know if we can get through anybody's.
I don't care.
We have our work plan. I figure if we go with them, and they're like, we like this, we don't like that.
Yeah, I know, it was probably, I'm fine with that.
I had another one. No, no, let me see if I have another. I can get one of the dogs. No, it's empty. I thought I brought, I thought I brought four copies. Here you go. Hey, Doug?
And, and, I got bit by a mouse.